I'm gonna call a meeting to order here January 4th, 2022. We have approval of agenda, approval of minutes for December 7th of 2021. Discussion on the property cleanup, public comment and the germ. And we did said, you said we had a little more discussion for the the rail. I don't know if that's not on there, but
It's in the back last
Yeah, last page of this.
What did it say about the rail?
I just looking at the page, it's not on the agenda, but it's, we had that last page on there. I didn't know if there was gonna be a discussion or not, but.
That's just, that's just a task, that's attached as part of the minutes.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, it's just part of the minutes. I mean, unless there's new information to be shared, we can put it on the agenda.
There's also the letter about property cleanup from her too in there, right?
Yes, it's not in here.
It's not?
No, it was, it was not.
Yeah, we have the email, but we don't have a printout attached to the agenda.
I printed your other letter, Megan, about the rail service.
Yeah. Alright, so.
Well, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
So we have a motion, a second, and we'll do roll call.
Aye.
Michelle.
Aye.
Megan.
Aye.
Fred.
Aye.
And Brian.
Aye.
And I'm, I myself. Alright, approval of minutes. And everybody gone through those? If you need a second. And I'll look for a motion.
Who made the motion?
Nobody, yeah.
Uh, nobody, yeah.
I would make a motion to approve it.
Okay, I second it.
Okay. Motion, second, all in favor, Jimmy?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
Fred?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
And I. So then we're gonna go to the property cleanup discussion again. First, I'll go over a few things. I did a lot of calling around. Every town that I called had, most of them had nothing in their bylaws. They would just go by and if they saw something, this is what I was told, if they saw something, they would just kind of go by and say, hey, you know, you know, the health officer or whoever they have, a zoning officer, would just go by and say, hey, you know, this is kind of, you know, we'd like to
Thank you, Megan.
Keep the town, trying to keep the town looking decent and just a general nice talk with them.
Yeah.
And most times they said that was enough to get things moving. Some people would clean up. Always gonna have somebody that doesn't want to do it, no matter what.
Exactly.
I, when I talked to Shastberry, Kelly up there had good information about Shastberry, they've done quite a few different things. And one of the other towns that I talked with, his name is Gig. He recommended doing a two, like a two-week cleanup for the town. Where they don't charge any fees to anybody that brings that garbage in that's doing a cleanup at a house.
Okay.
They have to have the location specified, so they know that it's not just somebody just bringing their garbage normally.
They have, they have to notify the town ahead of time that they're doing it?
Ahead of time, we could set anything as a precedence that way.
Okay.
But he said they've done that in the past and it's done real well as far as cleaning up. They actually had groups come out and help people clean up their properties if they, if they needed help.
Okay.
So it was, they let it know ahead of time, you gotta like.
He said Shastberry.
Yeah, it was free to, at the town to do it, they would set up the date, so if it was, you know, any, I'll just save my address, 121, and some people wanted to come and they were cleaning it up. I'd notify the town ahead of time that we're gonna clean that property, they know it's, it's that property, and they would get it, the dump for free.
Okay.
So which was a good idea.
Could anybody do that, anyone at all, or was, most people don't need it?
Any town resident on those cleanup weekends that
Okay, so the weekends?
Couldn't get rid of that, that's, if it's been a reported things and people haven't been going out to those places, any of them haven't cleaned up those properties, they would give them a, you know, basically at weekends to do that. So that's, and it's just to try to help up, clean up those locations.
One of the problems that we encountered with, front port with, was sometimes hard to get a truck. And so I suggested in that, that email that I sent out, that would it be at all possible to set aside one of the crummy or older dump trucks at the highway department? Any chance maybe one of the guys could drive it and not have to do any lifting, but, I mean, gee, that's
The amount, the amount of people, I took the weekend kind of driving around town. And I gotta tell you, it's a mess. It's a mess. So after we clean up, do we do it again?
We have to do it every year, you know, for, I think a two-week idea is a good one, or two weekends. Once a year isn't enough.
No, once a year is not enough, but are these people gonna keep dumping their, listen, I've been to a lot of car shows and I've been to a lot of antique tractor shows, and I can see where some of those things have value. But plastic bags, black plastic bags, it's nothing but drawing rats, as far as I'm concerned.
That's right.
And
A pickup truck full of plastic garbage bags, just because the bags are tied, you're supposed to, that's, that's supposed to be okay? I mean, there's houses with them piled up against the
If you go to Stewart's down there in the morning, you'll see one place, Crossman Racetrack, that's building up, building up huge amounts. It's been there for months.
By the gravel bed?
Yeah.
Oh, right afterward, they've got like the collapsed pop-up camper in the yard?
Yeah.
Yeah, and if it's, if it's a health risk, meaning it's drawing in rats and that kind of stuff, that falls under, from what they're saying, that falls right under the health office stuff to go do, because it's a health risk if there's animals that way. As far as just debris laying around, people just left stuff, that's not more, not as much as a health risk for anybody else, because it's, would be trespassing going across their property. If they're, they get hurt on their own property, that's on them, they've been tripping over it, but.
What about like refrigerators and stuff that, you know, how kids used to get caught in fridges all the time?
Well, one of the other things, for, for things that are metal, is offering or being able to offer a play, you know, somebody that can come and pick that stuff up for them. A lot of people don't want to get rid of it, because there's a cost to taking it away, but if you have a, have scrap metal guys, notifications where they can get ahold of them, they can come and pick it up and it's no cost at all, most of them will take it away, because they're doing it for scrap. So that, that could clean up a lot of the metal debris.
Good suggestion.
If it's something that it can take to the waste plant, you know, there's about five guys that do that, a lot of them, Christ, I could get you, you know, a bunch of people to do that. But to go in there all the time and just clean up somebody's property that just doesn't seem to care, it never will.
Right.
These are the people that are hard to do.
And that was like what they were stating, most of them did, is that it's, it's hard to have them clean up, that's what they said. I mean, we can work on it too, and if they come up with something, they're interested if it works out well for us. But not having it in the bylaws of cleaning it up was what I heard mostly. You need to have something written in the bylaws, that's what all of them stated. The ones that didn't have it, didn't push it, because they didn't really didn't have big issues with it, what they felt as a town, big issues. Arlington cleaned up quite a bit, Shastberry did quite a bit. Woodford, I didn't, I didn't get ahold of them at all. Stanford did some stuff and Reevesboro had some, some of that, but Arlington was one of the bigger ones that was putting out those things, they were just, you know, here's two weeks here, or a weekend here, another, you know, maybe a month after, they did another weekend, whatever it takes to try to get them in, there's a cost, yes, the town's gonna take a little bit on it, but it's helping the general populace get some of that cleaned up.
The town used to, used to have a free dump day.
Right.
Yes. Now, when you buy it, when you buy a dump sticker, you get
Yeah.
A free dump day of your choice, but I'm not, I'm wondering, it was the, because it was like a festival, when they had, it was, the road, the road was blocked.
Oh, it'd be all the way out to seven and up, up the side of seven.
But there was a lot of garbage was going into the, into the dump.
Yeah. Oh, I remember it being piled a hundred foot high.
I wonder if, I can't remember, really, if, when, when they were doing that, if we had less of this problem along, along the highway.
I don't, I know what you're saying, I don't know if there was a less of an issue, I, it seems to be more of an issue now, though.
Yeah.
I mean, everybody's talking about it, so.
You don't just have one funnel. I mean, you take Stanford, you take Arlington, you take those people, they got a real nice ball field up there, community area for sports, I, I think it's just a good feeling in town, like in Arlington, whatever. But Powell's a little, you know, something on your shoulder if you're from Sunfire to Powell.
We're tribal, we're tribal down here.
And it seems to be an attitude of live and let live, disgustingly in some places, but Powell's different in some areas.
It is, it is a different world down here.
Yeah, we're not doing a good job on Route 7. Well, what's mine is mine, and don't, don't dare call it garbage.
Right, right. I mean, we can try to provide the opportunity for them to clean up.
I plan on taking another nap on that mattress out in the backyard today.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
You know, it's moldy. I put a free sign on it.
Right, that, you did that way, but.
We ought to make a point that just because you put a free sign on something, doesn't mean it can sit out there six weeks or six months a year.
Yeah.
So I, I have an idea, it's not gonna be a popular one, but I feel it should be voiced. What about enacting a municipal trash service with just automatically billing residents? Whether you partake or not, you're paying toward it. And then just subcontracting it with like TAM or All-American Waste.
Getting, getting the
TAM, it's pretty expensive.
Everybody pays into it?
Yeah, everybody pays into it, like you, whether it be monthly, quarterly, whatever, and you just set up like a bi-weekly schedule. And yo, if you choose to not put your garbage out there, well, guess what, you're still paying, so if you want to hoard it in your yard, you're still gonna pay. It might be an incentive for people to like, alright, well, if I have to pay for it, I might as well use it.
The question with that is, if you see some elderly person or something like that, you, you, 100%, you'd do that. And then you say, well, I'm not that bastard, you know, he's healthy as hell, and, you know, why am I paying, why am I paying for the sewer when I don't get it, you know?
Hence, I say like municipal, townwide, like everybody, like it's not selective, like the sewer, where we're all paying, but only certain people get it.
I know, I know, I, I get what you're saying, it sounds good, but.
Sounds expensive.
I wonder, I wonder.
I think by what TAM charges up here to pick up our trash, I think it would be very expensive for the town.
I know that, I know the transfer station, a lot of their budget is derived from selling the annual permits, 30, what, $35 or $40 now for one of them. A lot of households aren't gonna, they're not gonna spend that money for that. Either bringing that, bringing that cost down somehow, and, and finding another way to get that money into the budget.
Well, that's, that was kind of my thought behind, yo, a townwide service, a mandatory service, you know, attached right onto your tax bill, whether it be a separate, separate item on your tax bill, or we just factor in, you know, part of the, part of the budget every year right toward it, and just charge towards that.
Would you still have a dump sticker fee?
My thought, my thought is, we wouldn't, because if we were then doing trash pickup, subcontracting it with whoever, this is just my thought, and then we wouldn't necessarily need a transfer station as much, maybe for like brush drop-off, like that kind of stuff. But if you literally provide the garbage cans in front of people's houses, you remove the excuse, oh, I don't have any way to get rid of it. Well, can you, can you walk your butt 20 feet to the end of your driveway, because we'll come pick it up? And then, at that point, then you can tackle the enforcement part of, well, if you're not doing it, we've already provided it for you, you're already paying for it, you're not using it, well, then we follow the, the enforcement part of it. Ultimately, it's gonna come down to where you're gonna have people that don't do it, we're gonna have to enforce it.
Yep.
If we're gonna take it seriously.
Wait a minute, but Brian, if you think this is, give yourself some homework and go figure out how much you'd have to raise people's taxes in order to pay for this. Like we
Well, yeah, that's fine.
It's expensive, and it's not like TAM or the, the transfer station are profligately spending, throwing money away and making huge profits, they're not.
I know they're not.
So it's expensive.
But with the transfer station, I mean, how many, what, like, I would have to talk to town, but I don't know what the percentage of residents that actually pay for permits is, because I, I doubt it's even half.
Yeah, and it's only $40.
Yeah.
Plus $3, $3.25 for a, a kitchen garbage bag, that's, you know, it's pretty cheap, but people resent it, you know?
Well, they do, that, but that was kind of my thought behind, yo, it's like, if, if we provide the service townwide and we spread the cost amongst everybody, then my hope would be that it would encourage some of the people that don't want to bring it to the transfer station or pay the money, like if, if it's a landlord, they're gonna factor it into the rent. And it's provided, their tenants really don't have an excuse at that point, because there are some landlords that don't provide trash service, they, it's, it's on you. So, I don't know, I was just trying to think of a way that you help spread the, the financial burden amongst all the taxpayers.
I'm saying to you, Brian, find out, what would the financial burden be?
I can do that.
Find it out and then talk about it, because people are real resistant to paying anything more than they are.
I, and that I completely get.
I mean, that's why that guy has a pickup truck full of garbage bags, because, you know, and it's gonna cost him hundreds of dollars to dump all that stuff at this point.
I hope he takes it somewhere beside roadside park.
Well, that was one of those things, one of the other things that the health officer, Nick at Arlington, when I talked with him, he said tech, tactical incentives is what most towns that he's talked with have, have done, tactical incentives, meaning they're, the idea is, if you have something in your bylaws that says you're, you can't have this, like we, I know the town here worked on three cars, you can't have more than three cars. The incentive is, is to try to keep your property clean, so you don't have a dozen cars there. That was the incentive, or not incentive, they put that in place, so if somebody has more, what do they do to get it cleaned up? There's an, so he says, come up with some kind of incentive to say, only three cars is what it is, without trying to enforce that, how do we give them an incentive to not go over that? And so if we use that as just example, maybe an incentive like that would be, you know,
What is the incentive?
You could clean up, you could clean it up by going to scrap metal. It's, it's a couple hundred bucks to get rid of a car, most guys will buy $200 to buy a scrap car. Incentive is, you could sell it, make some money, you know, instead of letting them sit in the yard. Going out, letting them know that, most people don't even know that idea, you know?
Is that why they have the cars, though, that they're, we're either gonna cannibalize them and use the parts, or they're gonna sell them, that's what they're thinking. Meanwhile, they never get around to selling.
Right, I mean, most, anybody with a car, you know, yard full of cars, that's what they, they tend to clean them up later on, or they're not, they're just, you know, pillaging them for, for, for parts. After they're done with parts, it just sits there, so having a way of, again, like maybe offering the services out there who, who has that, maybe there's a list that could be drawn up that says, hey, these are the people pick up scrap metal around, these are the people who will buy those cars from you. Any kind of scrap metal will clean up, clean up yards, it doesn't have to be a scrap car, it could be refrigerators, you know, any kind, kind of metals, these are the people who will come, come to your yard and clean that up for you. Incentive there is to clean your yard up, but, and get rid of some of that stuff, and some of them may pay a little bit to get some of that metal. I know it's six cents a pound for scrap metal, most, most tins and stuff, if they gave them two cents a pound for it, they're making money still, they're making something on it, and it's getting their yard cleaned up. Without a big of a cost.
We tried this once back in the early planning wards, that we, when metal was really expensive, and we put a list of people that pick it up, and those that chose, chose, those that still, it's still there, it's still there.
They're still holding on to that valuable metal, because they know they could get more for it in a few years.
We're back to black bags. I, I can't, I question the metal, because some of it is valuable, with all antique tractors and antique cars and stuff like that, it is, but black bags see no value, see no value.
Right.
Driving around town, there's about 10 places that are really, really bad. And I'm not, you know, I'm just sticking around where you can see it, this place is its worst, but, and, you know, every panel has one. They don't seem to wanna try, if they just try, someone would help them. But Route 7's a mess. And if you're attracting people to come here, you know, you're just saying, God, how did they allow this, the number of cars, and if you walk in, I'm not gonna name it, but if you walk into the first person and say, you know, you got 12 cars there, why are you picking on me, how about so-and-so, and how about, and they're right, there's other people with the same amount. And you're picking on me, why don't you get after them first? And it gets to be a little, you know?
That's why I say it's, it's gonna come down to enforcement.
Yes.
We're gonna, the town, if we're gonna take it seriously and not just keep talking about it, we as a town are gonna have to just, we're gonna have to bite the bullet, take the financial burden and start going after people. We need to, we need to strengthen our laws to where it's not so easy to weasel out of it, if we have to take somebody to court.
Right. That's why I always say before, is just putting something into the bylaw, or not to put it in yet, but we can draft something to put in.
So you guys
Take the time to have them look at it and then see, and if it doesn't, if they can't do it, if he says, no, this doesn't work, then.
So Megan has something.
Yeah, you guys, I did make some suggestions, alright?
She did.
For bylaws, no discarded indoor furniture, such as easy chairs, couches or mattresses, shall remain outside longer than, I know, how long? A week? You know, what's, what's reasonable? Bags, household trash, where they're leaning against a house or
She cut out again, I think.
Stacked in a pickup bed for longer than
Delayed time. The pickup bed thing, I think, is like, you can't do anything about it, it's mobile, you know, like, it's not staying in one place for
Well, no bag garbage should stack, you know?
Yeah.
We can think, we can word it and
Yeah.
What about tires?
Tires, they took 200 out of the Elka Trailer Park.
Did they? When I took over my property 20 years ago, I pulled over 300 out of there, from a previous person, that they were making money.
Oh, yeah.
I found where they were putting them.
Yeah. I was hoping we could get some money, went outside stores. Well, no, we're talking about this money that COVID's giving to the town, and somehow there's a disease involved with rats. And this is, this is money used for disease.
Your time to shine, Megan, we were just talking about that before the meeting started.
Yeah, yeah, well, I mean
The robotic plate started with a flea on a rat.
So Megan actually has, can offer a little bit of insight as far as the ARPA funds.
Okay, that's what we were talking about.
Yeah, so we did do research on it to see if it was possible to use those funds to clean, to clean up that area, but it's not directly related to COVID.
Disease, though.
The ARPA specifically says COVID, though.
Ah, okay, okay. Disease of choice.
I thought, I thought that the owner, previous owner died from COVID, and that's directly COVID-related, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There has to be some way to
I got it.
He died from being put in a nursing home. He died with it, of it.
Well, I mean, they don't wanna go outside, they just throw it outside, because they don't wanna go to the dump, they're free to catch COVID, so.
I, I cringe whenever I see anything out, out beside the road with a sign that says free, you know, I, I think the intention, if it's, if that's the intention, to give something to somebody, that's nice,
Just now?
Nice thought, but I think, so I question sometimes if it's
Yes.
Please take my garbage away free for me.
We did, we did discuss a junk ordinance back in the day.
Yeah.
Perhaps I think it is well-intentioned, Fred.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you know, like perfectly good, you can recycle it.
Yeah.
But if it stays out for more than a week
You want a copy?
Yeah.
There's only two copies.
That's alright, right. And you, you know, watching something
Yeah, I remember that.
Whether it's a sofa, or a set, or anything, it just, the weather will dismantle it, and it's not, it's not attractive.
Yeah, so if I remember right, the big thing that we had for, Jim Kosis sent an email in to Megan, she's printing out the articles right now, from when, previous select board, when I was on, we discussed junk ordinance, and the, yeah, and the big thing was, basically the same thing we're discussing now, it comes down to enforcement, like, how much are we willing to spend? Because we quickly realized with potential legal fees, especially with some of the bigger properties, it's not just a matter of like, oh, here's a hundred dollar fine, and they do what they're told, it's gonna be like, well, I'll see you in court, you guys now get to spend 30 grand on a lawyer. So it's kind of one of those things.
When they lose the case and find a way to
Well, the problem is, the town doesn't have a good track record of winning those cases for attorneys.
Boy, it's low.
Yeah, it's all money in their pocket, either way.
And you, you make a claim.
Yeah.
It's just a guy that defines junk. Who of us are gonna define junk?
Yeah. I mean, I think you were hitting on something with like stuff in, in black, you know, garbage bags, just sitting out there, I think that could be a good definition point, like, you know, is it just in a garbage bag outside? That could be a pretty good definition of garbage.
25, a third of them, though.
I think indoor furniture
That's still garbage.
Oh, I know, I know, the amount of them, though, yeah.
I think indoor furniture, like mattresses and couches.
Cleaners.
If you define it, you know, discarded indoor furniture that has sat outside for longer than, and then you put a time limit, that, you know, people seem to think if they just leave it out on the roadside, someone will want it. People don't want that old furniture anymore.
Well, especially if it gets rained on.
Yeah, it's soaked.
No, I was gonna say, back in my 10 years, we'd look for that stuff to go burn it.
Yeah, well, that's the other thing, you just be able to go do that.
Yeah.
Now, they don't want to burn anything, but clean wood now, but
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's the type of thing, I, I think we should kind of, I feel, what I was saying before, I think we should draft something that we can look at better, that has something, you know, like Megan you know, like Megan laid, laid out in here or any of the stuff we discussed, just to try to bring the, the something to light as to what could we do, then have it checked. Yes, there's gonna be a little cost to have an attorney go over it, but I think doing that is a, is a small cost right now. To look at it and say, this is what we're proposing, we could try to do, put it into an ordinance, um, or putting it into our bylaws to do. And if they'd say, hey, that's a good way to start, and yes, you can enforce it by that way, then we have to make a decision at that point whether we go forward and let the select board know and see what they think too.
So, yes. So, alright, so, yeah, I, I agree about having something in the bylaws, but then again, what's gonna be the enforcement of it? I mean, is there, is it gonna be fines? Is it, you know, you have a certain amount of days and things like that? So I think besides just having the bylaws, we need to be able to have some sort of plan as to the enforcement behind it. But like also, um, solutions, like we're talking before, like, you know, with doing the free dump day, or if there's, you know, a weekend and, I don't know, we have trucks that go around and, you know, we have a, a budget, something in the budget for TAM where, you know, they go to, you know, certain locations and pick up. Maybe there's a drop location. Maybe there's a dumpster, you know, there's a few dumpsters that people can get to easily to dump trash. And there's like a certain amount of days. So it's kind of like a cleanup day, but in, um, like, you know, locations type of thing. Cause I still think, like, even if it's in the bylaws and we try to enforce it with fines and stuff, I, I don't, I don't know if it's gonna go anywhere without having a solution for actually getting it cleaned. And I think that, I think that falls back on, you know, it's gonna be an expense of the town, you know, but it gets some of it cleaned up and then maybe it's something that's easier to maintain. I mean, I know me with my craft room, you know, I, I have to make a dent in it, but once I get, get it dented and get it cleaned up, then it's easier to maintain it being cleaned.
And that's why they suggested weekend, multiple weekends in a row, just because some people may not be able to get there that weekend. Next weekend's free for them or a weekend after. Um, running it five, six weekends, eight weekends out of it, you know, it's not, it's not gonna hurt to take that little extra into the dump. Yes, we're paying for it, but I, if it's gonna help a little bit to clean some of those things up without having to worry about enforcement and anything else, I think that's a big step.
I think the problem with, I, I think it's a good idea doing the cleanup, but if we don't do anything to encourage it to be kept clean afterward, it just turns, in my mind, it just turns into people saying, okay, well, I'll just hoard it till the town offers a free cleanup day next time.
And that's, that's what we had to write in, something or we, if we helped out this year and it starts to build up, then you would.
Like, we offer the free cleanup opportunity, then after that, once that window's closed, then we have to start tackling enforcement.
Going after it.
But then we have to do it uniformly and we have to actually follow through.
Right. It had to be.
If you got about an acre of land and it's a mess, you have to take the way of the rubbish, but then you have to walk around the area. Some group would have to walk. I'm, I'm talking about cleaning up after a fair or something. You've gotta visibly walk all over the area and pick up every piece of paper. I see a couple of properties that are massive. And you know where they're at. And to clean that up, you'd have to get people out there. A dozen people out there or more to go and pick up the whole acre.
I will say, uh, you know, you talked about volunteers and I love the idea, you know, I love it because I did it with town proud.
I, I lost volunteers. I lost them.
Yeah, that's the last I heard was volunteers.
But gee, it's hard to get volunteers. It's hard to get them.
Yes.
Well, and, but there's also, there's clubs and things out there now, like you got the ATV club and stuff. There's different things you could try to per, see if we can get them to wanna help clean up. I know some of them do that stuff right now. Um, I know they've been going around cleaning up roadsides and that kind of stuff. This might be another opportunity to help the community that way.
Is the state deal still doing like work release programs?
No.
No, I don't think they do that.
The last guy died, no. I tried to get him to clean up the fairs.
I think there's some, there's some part of this still that hinges on the question of why should I, and why should I want to? What's, you know, what, what do I care? And all of that, having an answer for that, for those questions. And, and honestly, a well thought out answer for that.
Alright Fred, it's on you.
Yeah, thank you.
I might have some light on that, Fred. The little bit of light on that, I, I, I thought about that myself. Would be property value. Um, if you want to clean your property up, your value is better. Understandably, many people might not want it because they, they say, oh, well, my taxes are gonna go up. But there's an incentive. If we, if you clean it up, yes, normally your property tax would go up. Maybe the town, we can have something written in there where the town doesn't raise that tax rate up like that. Yes, it's better value gonna be going forward, but maybe we don't have to raise that right now. Just because it's clean, doesn't mean you have to go after it.
Yeah.
We can, we can postpone that, you know what I mean?
Is, does the town base the, uh, 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 valuation of property on whether it's clean or not? That surprises me.
In some cases, maybe, depending on, I'm not sure, I would have to ask them how they go out and look at it, but um, I know that value of housing is down if it doesn't look very well. They base, if, I don't know if, how they're physically basing it. I couldn't tell you that, but I do know if you look at a house that has a lot of trash around it, doesn't look well, it's not as valued as something that's nice and clean and pristine, so.
To a lot of people, it, it does matter because you, you'll always hear somebody complaining about their own personal property value going down because of the situation or not situation. So it is.
I know several instances. That one is, one is, you've got a nice house at the end of the road and the beginning of the road's a asshole.
Right.
And, uh, you, you have lost your value down there.
Right. Whether you really have or not, you know.
Well, the guy didn't buy your place.
It, it, you've lost your feeling for, for what you have, so.
It's hard to wanna spend three hundred thousand dollars on a home when you're driving by a dilapidated crap hole on your way there.
It's like, you know, some of us really trim our yards. Uh, we, we mow it and trim it and do we do the thing with flower, flower gardens and stuff like that? And some of us don't. Um, it, you know, so that's to each his own, I think, but, um, there is an extent where where even I get, I get aggravated when I see roadside brush, you know? The sticks growing up, you know, and it's like, but it's not, it's really none of my business, but it irritates me.
But it's private property.
Right, right.
I mean, the biggest dump around right now is at the racetrack. And Owen Cass. Tires, tires are being dumped there.
So that's.
I spoke to somebody about it and, uh, they said it's private property, we can't do anything.
The state, the, the state would be involved in illegal dumps.
They don't care. Because, uh.
Hello. Can we go over what people are going to do then? What assignments? Because I think like, we've got a couple of different, uh, drafts of, uh, the beginnings of bylaws. Uh, drafted bylaws. So I would work on that with somebody if someone wants to do that. Michelle, maybe? And then, uh, Fred, I think that's a great idea to write up, uh, something about why.
Why? I would need a lot of feedback from, you know, a lot of, uh, collaboration on that because I, I can write a science fiction novel if I want to, but. Then I gotta get somebody to buy it, you know, so.
Where would you start enforcing? The title.
Yeah, well.
So Brian is going to, um, Brian is gonna look into how much.
Yeah, so I, I'll, I'll find out what, I'll find out what nearby towns already do their own municipal, municipal trash service. And I'll, I'll see how they went about it and I'll go from there. I mean, it's, I'm, I'm sure it's not gonna be cheap, but I'm not looking for the town to like buy garbage trucks. My thought was it would be cheaper if we did it to then just subcontract it to, you know, All American, Casella, Waste Management, whoever. That was my thought. So I will, I'll look into that and see what I can find out.
And if you do that, could you get a price comparison to what we pay right now as far as the dump cost, whatever it costs per year for that to be open?
Absolutely.
What pickup costs, you know, like, like I said, TAM.
If it's a fifty grand, go around town and pick it up and we're spending a hundred grand in a town dump now, it's, that would be more cost effective. We're gonna save money that way, you know?
Yeah. I mean, I'm not looking to eliminate the transfer station because I think it's, for big bulk items, I think it'd still be good to at least keep it for that. For, you know, brush drop off, the white goods.
Right, but if it cuts down that trash, we're gonna save money that way. I don't know what the difference is.
I know household trash too, is a lot of people, I don't think, a lot of people have the, the concept of the understanding of recycling and composting and, and separate, just separating things and by, by, by recycling and separating things, pretty much that, that three fifty a bag that you were talking about is eliminated. You put, you put your, put your food scraps in for compost, that's free. You put your milk jugs in, free. Your cans, your boxes, all free.
But you look at these vendors though, they never, they, they don't even think about what you just said. They just put it in a bag and throw it in the back of a pickup until the pickup's over and then we get another pickup. And, uh, it's overflowing and it's nasty.
But, you know, it's like, if you got, you've got a landlord that's required to handle, handle the trash, they might wanna do it the smart way. You, you gotta get those buckets, get two or three buckets for recycling items and stuff like that. Same, you know, rather than having a big cost for, uh, you know, you can, you can always add it to the rent, but you might want, might be interested in cutting down the cost by having stuff separated.
I think the kids in school started that and it worked very well for a long time, you know? Recycling, teaching in school, taking home, but, uh.
Maybe we can have school, school kids teach people how to take care of their trash. They know, they know more about that.
I mean, once, once we have like a, a bylaw or something, I mean, would it be, can't think of the right word, but, I don't know, productive, that the, the people that, like Jimmy was saying, he's like, yeah, ten places that are a real mess. Is it worth going to the owners or whatever on the property and saying, you know, we need this cleaned up? What, what do you need to make this easier for you to do this?
That's a great question.
You know, if they're like, well, it's just like, the one guy, she's like, shit, I got twenty-five, oh, sorry. I got twenty-five bags of trash already and it's just gonna be really expensive. Well, they say, you know, we have the, the free dump day or something like that, but he's like, I don't have the transportation. Maybe there's something that we can, like, Megan was saying about, you know, having, having one of the dump trucks maybe go by and let the person throw all twenty-five bags in there. And it goes to the dump for free. I, I, I think might need some input from people as to why they're unable to clean up their stuff as well.
Who wants to interview them?
Well, yeah, yeah, no, I get.
Oh, no, we have interviewed those people, okay? There was a gentleman before the DRB while back. And, uh, permit was, permit was denied because it wasn't complete, but conversation after the meeting was maybe if you cleaned up this property, it would go a long way, you know, just kind of sitting around talking. And, uh, it's gotten worse.
It's gotten worse.
So, thank you. You know, and it was meant, you know, in a, in a nice way.
Right. It was a nice, it was a nice conversation.
Yes, it was. And I thought, I thought it was received, to be honest with you. And I'm disappointed that it wasn't. Cause you could go a long way in this town if you start to clean up a piece of property and you were new in town and you wanna get some people behind you. First thing, you clean up the property. And, uh, that was expressed and, uh, I thought, you know.
It seemed like it was.
Yeah, yeah, received, but, uh.
Like you wanna do it, but.
And a lot of that property went to another place for free. But this is being on boards. You, you, you interviewed a lot of people and listened to it for a number of years and, uh, deaf ears.
I mean, my, my feeling on it is gonna be, I think if we approached it right, um, and we get it all drafted and we approach everything right, you're probably gonna get some people that are gonna wanna do it. You're certainly gonna get some that just say completely not gonna do anything. And if we have to do some enforcement, a little bit, a little bit stronger hand on those, we do that. I mean, that's, that's, I think that's what we're gonna have to do, but again, I, I, I think with something we gotta draft and get together, have an attorney look to make sure we can do legally why, you know, do that and then go from there.
Go to court with the big ones.
Well, uh, when Michelle and I do a, a draft of the few things that we have talked about, would, would you put a fine into the bylaw and a time limit? What's a good time limit?
I would leave that to the zoning administrator, those, 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 those things. Yeah.
Well, if we put a draft together, um, leave that open with a question mark on it and we can have Mike come in and sit down with us and we'll go over that and see.
I can tell you, I can tell you, I know, I know, I know that the current zoning administrator is interested in this.
He's the one who instigated this whole discussion, isn't he?
Well, he and I, he and I had some discussions and, and this is where we've, this is where we are so far.
Well, he, you know, I think we might wanna issue him.
Audio.
Delayed.
Uh, bulletproof vest. Too late?
All we heard was bulletproof.
Issue him. Heard nothing else until he said bulletproof vest.
The G I issue, not the town issue. But I, first, the first incentive is property value. Property value has to be the.
Right.
Start talking that, you know, in a nice way that, uh, and you don't have the right to really mess up somebody else's property value. But that's somebody with a conscience.
I, 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 um, as a health officer, I went, I spoke to a person about a separate issue. And while I was there, I mentioned some, some of the trash that was, it's like, it's not really attractive and you should, you should want to, you should just want to not have that around as your environment. And a week or so after that, this person was out cleaning up the air, the yard and did a really good, I think did a really good job and it's up on Route seven, across from.
So you hit the right, you did it right.
I stopped again and he remembered me and I stopped, I patted him on the back. I told him that he should feel proud of what he did. And he, he was beaming from ear to ear. He was really excited about that. And he, he's been maintaining it. I think he's been doing a good job. I've heard from him again since then on, on different issues, but, yeah, so I think you can't, you can't have, you can't have a, a, something like that as a plan, but if you're comfortable to do that, ha- have those types of conversations with people.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. We could probably have conversations with some people and some people I think it would go over, okay. Others, it's in one ear, out the other.
Don't, don't come on as an authoritarian on anything because that's when you're, you're gonna get.
Resistance.
A lot of these people are quite defiant.
Ah, welcome to Pownell. Living like live.
It's one of the things that makes Pownell worth being. I think we've had a good, we had a good conversation so far, I think.
Michelle, when's a good time to get together and do this? Or do you wanna just do it over Zoom?
Yeah, we, we, we can do it over Zoom because I'm like doctor's appointments and stuff like that. I have a, I have a Zoom account, so I can.
Okay, great.
I can do it. I'll, I'll email you.
Great, thanks.
Okay, um, so basics, I'm just gonna rough go over a little bit of the stuff real quick, just to sum it up. Um, maybe providing some kind of service is what we went over. Um, some kind of garbage service. Um, talk about property values, incentives, possible fees. Um, talk about property values, incentives, possible fees. Um, lessen the burden, burden of cost and, and the citizens that way. Um, and uh, checking with groups and clubs possibilities to help clean up. Um, this is general, I just generally put stuff down.
I like the idea of the extra free days, extra free days.
Yep.
Put that in.
Yes.
And extra cleanup days.
You have to join the landfill, right, to get a free day?
Okay, well, you, be, be a resident, be a resident of the town. But that, you know, I, I think if there's a way to offset that cost for that permit. It would be worth exploring.
Could we have a sliding scale? You'd have to ask people how much they make or what their income is.
No, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I would just flat, a flat cut on the cost of that. But provided it's, it's, it's a resident, it's a resident of the town. We want more people either.
To buy a sticker, you're saying?
Taking care of their garbage, one way or the other.
Yeah, yeah.
Either putting it in, in canisters that are provided by their landlord or if they don't have a landlord, if they're the homeowner. Take care of it, either contract it out to somebody or take it yourself. And, and if you need to, if you need, if you don't, can't afford to pay Casella or. Um, All American or whoever. Cause that's a contract, it's like a weekly.
Yeah.
Service. Now, that can be, that can be costly, but to, to realize you can separate your garbage and. You can take stuff for virtually free, but you know, that, that, that permit, that permit fee might be a turn off to that even.
I think, I think you could uh, sort of have a scholarship. You know, kinda thing where you gave somebody a free. Advertising it without telling the whole town.
It's asking, it's asking for somebody to come forward with sensitive information and people. Especially, I think in, in, in Pownell, they're sensitive, they're hesitant to do that.
But we could just say, you know, so it looks like you're having trouble. Uh, maybe we could just get you a free permit for a couple of years. Without asking how much to take.
Yeah, I don't see why you couldn't give a.
Why don't we try a pilot and we just offer free permits to the citizens for a year? And see if it results in an uptick in the amount that's, you know, turned into the dump. Cause Tom tracks everything by poundage.
The only problem is that, that, that's. That fee off, offsets their cost.
It does offset it, but if we're gonna offer.
Find that money to where they don't have to sell the tickets, but you know, they have to print the tickets and, and give them out. But.
This family's in, this family's in trouble.
What about Fred? What about if you, when you're going out as a health officer? If you had that option, that you could say to somebody, look, I can get you a free. Uh, dump sticker, would that help? In other words.
In that, in that role, I, I have to wait, I basically have to be called by, and, and a lot of it.
Not making public.
Involves um, rental property. You know, um, that's why I, I have taken the steps of getting in. Contact with Mike and working, cause I'm also on the planning commission and I'm aware of the zoning, the zoning. Bylaws and stuff like that, so, and what the zoning says on, on certain, certain issues. Um, I think we can combine and get things done that way. We're working like that.
Same hat.
Yeah.
Um, the other thing I was thinking, instead of that, per uh, sort of a, a, a tag that we're getting now. Uh, is to go by, when you go in, he can mark down, you'd have to show at the door going in. Your uh, property tax bill. To show that you had a.
You want, you want all, you want all residents.
I was gonna say probably a good half of our residents are renters.
Rentals.
Uh, you, that's invasion of privacy. You can't, the, what, Tom is not a social worker, he, he can't find out what people's, or he's not a.
I think, I think it's, it's definitely, you don't, you don't do that at, at the transfer station. You do that when you're, when you're issuing the permit. It's like.
Yeah, when you get your permit, he gives you the little application, you write down your address on it and then.
Just to prove you're a resident. You're renting, you know, if you're renting a place, you know, you claim to rent a place. You know, somebody from, from Bennington or something like that isn't gonna, generally isn't gonna, there won't be a whole lot that would like. Say I'm renting this place in Pownell just, just for a free.
Okay, you got the issue with the trailer park down in Pownell where someone left and went to Bennington and left a mess.
Oh, yeah.
And that's what you're working on now. You got a million things going on that involve people that were here, left a mess and left. And they're trying to, we're trying like hell to get this solved. And maybe open up, you know? Twenty, twenty trailer parks, but it's somebody that's been here, don't care and gets.
And I don't know, I, I haven't gone that far into the, into the bylaws where I know it's specifically mentioned in, under trailer parks.
Yeah.
But is it mentioned under tenement houses or, or other, other rental units? It's like, I'm not sure it is, so that might be worth looking at too. But you don't wanna single out people who are paying rent and separate them from people who are paying a mortgage, you know?
All those people in the trailer parks now, all, all on their trailer, they own, they own their trailers.
And, and.
Yeah.
In a lot of them.
Yeah.
There, there's, there are a couple of people who.
With the new owners.
Own multiple units and, and.
That way they, nobody can go in there and uh.
Rent them out and may, and maybe maintains them if they feel like it.
If they feel like it. Their cleanup is uh, free this time in the trailer park, second time it's on yours. That's in the alter.
Yeah, that's on there, yep.
And they did a great cleanup.
Don't make me have to do this again.
Yeah, maybe, well, it's gonna cost you.
Yeah, yeah.
Or you get evicted.
Yep.
It's all being written in the laws now with the new owners.
Yep.
If you pay over a million dollars for a trailer park, you want to, you want something to happen.
We could take a similar stance.
Yes, we can.
You know, you don't have, we don't have to be. Thugs about it, but just like, you just, this is what we're gonna, we're gonna take care of this.
I gotta be a little click, we're close.
It's like parents, you know, you pick up the kid's socks and stuff, but you know.
We don't wanna strong arm the town, that's not what we're doing, we just wanna.
Get resistance.
Provide a little better living place. That's all we're looking for.
Yep.
Everybody wants a little better, a little cleaner area to live in.
In America right now, it's don't tell me what to do.
Right.
Yes.
It's the wrong thing, more or less, you know? But this is an attitude that's in Pownell. So, let's not cross the bridge and show we're a bunch of jerk.
You know what? I always say, and I say that, don't tell me what to do.
Yeah.
Don't, don't. No, say to me, don't, don't tell me what to do, ask me, ask me and you're probably gonna get what you want.
Probably are, you know, how do you know? But a couple of people don't live here, they live in Massachusetts.
Yeah.
That's why, Fred, I think as a health officer and maybe.
Lost it again.
Yeah.
We could give the zoning officer the same mission to say, I will give you a free pass at the dump. And we'll try to get some help cleaning this up. What do you need? But only once.
Yep. I think he's the right man for the job.
Yeah, I do. I really do.
Really do. No, no, it's just a conversation, you're talking to people like.
Approaching people in the right way.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I would, uh, I think we've got somewhere we can start with. Let's try to put some of this stuff together. Make it a little more. Finalized, not, not finalized.
Everybody bring some more information and ideas and we try to hammer something out.
Hammer something out, just to get a, a layout of what it is and we probably get Megan to type some of it up and. We can also then, again, maybe get Mike here to go over some of that stuff. Uh, next meeting or something, um, what he would think about charging if.
Maybe we could invite Tom to come down and offer input from the transfer station.
Yes.
You better.
Well, I'm sure Tom's probably gonna watch this video later and pull his hair out.
I hope somebody's watching, they might give us some input.
Right, well, Jim's watching.
Oh, Jim's watching, yeah.
Well, that's all we're after, you know, if anybody has input.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We don't have all the solutions, we want, we want input and ideas.
Yep.
Look at that nice kitty.
Kitty's watching.
Another, another quick idea I had is uh, maybe sending out. Um, to a town mailer or flyers on that as to. Um, a response, like do it like a small questionnaire. What would people feel about cleaning up the town and cleaning up the locations? Would they help? Would they do, you know, maybe just put a little question thing like that together that we can get out to all the.
I think you'd get a lot of support and Megan'd be the one to do that.
Something like that, just so we can get some more.
What do you think? What do you think, folks? You know, what, what's Pownell's future as far as picking up the things, making property value a little bit? Making more incentive for people to wanna come here, they're gonna look at our school, they're gonna look at this, what we got, and then they're gonna see pockets of trash. What do you think? We, we're only human.
Maybe uh, piggybacking on your free, free dump days. Maybe we could strategically just place dumpsters around town, like was being suggested. To coordinate with the same thing. You can't make it across town over there? You're like, well, there's one sitting down there.
I had a dumpster years ago outside of my store, like they were coming in with little bags and this, the oil cans in there and there's diapers in there. And I had to put it out back, but most of them were coming from Massachusetts.
Yeah, yeah. All the college kids.
Well, people, people a little.
If you have an open dumpster.
Uh, yeah.
Well, I'm not saying like an open dumpster there for like months on end, I'm talking about you leaving there for a weekend.
This week, there's gonna be a dumpster here, um, not Downway Stewart's probably, but uh, someplace in the middle.
Well, we'll see if we can get any, any businesses to donate their parking lot for a weekend, to set a dumpster in there. You know, you know, we'll cover any cleanup if stuff gets dumped in the lot, you know, we'll.
Three forty-six we got right by the tannery, right there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Lot the town has right there. Throw one there, uh, one maybe down by the track there.
That's what I was thinking, is that stretch of road in between the old ball field and the, the old lot on the other side.
Right, yes.
I mean, people are already dumping garbage there half the time.
Yep.
Bennington used to have a problem though, like at the Salvation Army.
We're gonna pay that cost to them anyway, you know what I mean? So it's.
Village Market will let us set one off to the side there.
Yes.
You know, like I said, not permanent.
Weekends that we're gonna do free day.
Yep.
Then we don't have to worry about other people trying to throw stuff in later on.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, take it away and uh.
Yeah, so that weekends that we're gonna do it, we'll just throw some in there. I think it's a good idea.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know what those costs would be on that, but it's, it can't be all that bad, you know?
Yeah, I have no idea what, what Casella and. I know you can get dumpsters through other, other guys, I don't know what they're charging for, I haven't priced out thirty yard dumpsters in a couple of years.
For Greenup Day, Dan always did it for free.
Oh, yeah, I forget Martel does it.
Yeah, Martel's.
And it might, we might be able to talk with somebody like that, like Casellas or somebody and just say, hey, listen. Do to help clean up, you're gonna get trash.
Hey, hey, always did do contribute a dumpster for free for years for us on Greenup Day.
They always did for the fair. They always gave us a dumpster there, but I would question, I would, I would work with Martel because he's a town guy.
Yep.
And uh, you know, see if he could put something around town. I shy away from being around my end of town. There's too many people that come in. The racetrack would be, well.
I mean, all their, what they're volunteering is the cost of that dumpster, what they normally would charge that dumpster. They're still getting the pay for that, it's not coming out of their pocket to, to get rid of the trash, so.
Well, we.
It's one of those days that we're doing the free time, so.
Invite some people here that know what we do.
Yeah, we'll see what we can get.
Yeah.
Sounds good, everybody knows what they're.
All right, so I say before we schedule our next meeting. We make it a point to invite Tom down to see if Tom will join us.
I would say Tom and Mike.
Yeah, well, yeah, I figured we'd already decided on Mike.
Yeah, yeah, I'd say both, yeah, sounds like a plan.
And any input from anybody out there, you know?
Yeah, and more inputs. Um, and you said you could post that, Megan?
Yeah.
So hopefully that'll give us some more input that way.
Yeah, okay, so continue this discussion, it's definitely our first.
I'm gonna try, I'm gonna gather some more information. And try to figure out.
Oh, yeah, that's good, Brian. Excuse me.
Yeah, and uh, you ladies will work on that part and throw something together. Just so we can go back over it again, next meeting, we can just go over it again, we'll get some more information from, from Tom and. And see where we can.
Yeah, cause Tom.
Hack something out.
If, if Megan's willing, if she emailed Tom and asked him to just pull together, you know, give us. You know, roughly how many permits he sells a year, what kind of usage he has over there. Cause I think he records how many, you know, what permit comes in when. So he, he can probably tell us, you know, how many permits he sells and what kind of usage they get.
Yeah.
I know I buy mine every year, but then I only use it for the free dump day and dump tires and that's it.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, and see if he's willing to come in for our next meeting. He doesn't have to, it's not mandatory.
Yeah, him, him and Mike. If we can get them.
Wanna meet on the eighteenth?
Uh, what day is that?
January or February?
Next regular meeting, eighteenth?
Get my calendar.
I think we can get it done by then.
It's two weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, if nothing crazy happens, I should be able to get at least some information.
Sounds good.
Fred, if you wanna get, if you wanna go like me, I'm at the library every Wednesday. Uh, if you wanna talk, if you really wanna talk about this, writing up.
Yeah, I'm, 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 I'm working, I'm back. Even though I'm retired, I'm working full time, so I'm like seven, seven AM till four thirty or so. Usually out of town.
Excuse me.
Definitely, if we, if we bump into each other, we can have a conversation.
All right.
Okay.
Sounds good, so uh, I'll look for a motion to adjourn and, or no, sorry, we had public comment. Do we have anybody who needs to comment?
Hello, I'm gonna just charm in so you guys can go home. First of all, I thought tonight's conversation covered everything from A to Z and beyond. Um, I, I appreciate the discussion, unfortunately, it just reminds me of um, ten, twenty. And I hate to say even thirty years ago that this discussion has gone on, so. One thing I'd like to throw out is I, I'm a firm believer in not inventing the wheel. Megan, I really appreciate everything that you're doing to um, kinda putting ordinance together, but I think. I think Walker had put together an ordinance that I think we should pull that ordinance together. And review that one and started, instead of starting from ground zero. I sent you the email there back to nineteen, yes, and um. Ryan, you were sitting right there and.
Yeah, I recognize that bald head.
We're just repeating everything and I'm, 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 I'm against free dump days anymore, free dump days. Because the dump is being subsidized by the taxpayers. It is not being paid for by the amount of money that's going in there. And every single time someone gets something free in there, I'm the one, or the people that own property are the ones that are paying for it. And.
But they, they don't have to look at it, no.
I don't care, and then it comes to the point, you guys talked about property values, yes, well. We have to look at two things, there's grand list and there's property value, right? If I've got a piece of property, and luckily I don't, but if I had a piece of property of mine next, or something next to me and it was. Really a trash type of place, my grand list should go down. I mean, I should not have to live and look at that, right? My taxes should go down. I don't, I'm not gonna worry about my property taxes. I don't, I'm not going to worry about my property, um, tax or property at this time. I can't put that on to the town's, um, responsibility other than we need an ordinance in this town and we have to stop saying not to bring out the ordinance because we don't have the enforcement for it. If we need to, we need to go out there, create the ordinance. And if people will not do what the ordinance says, it's time for us to spend the money to clean it up, but put a lien on the property. That's why we have water liens. We have property liens. There are many liens out there.
Well, I know the fear behind the, doing the liens is the town can potentially end up with a bigger expense where we say the trailer's Don Berdix. You got trailers from the fifties and sixties that are asbestos, they got lead. It'd be really easy for somebody to say, oh, you're going to put a lien on and take it? It's all yours. And that's, that's kind of the fear. And then suddenly we've got a thirty thousand dollar cleanup for one trailer.
Well, you know, the, 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 the trash in the property is the owner's of the property's problem, not the trailer property. So if you put a lien on the property that's owning the property where the trash is on, you're going to find the trailer owner, or not the, the property owner, which are the landlords, having to clean that up. All right? There it's, we're putting the burden on them, not the trailer owners. All right? This is separate from, um, trailer owners. Yes. But I mean, I, I need to think about that a little bit more, but a lot of the trash that's happening out there is because of the renters and we're not going after the owners to crack down on what's happening. And then my last comment, because I don't want to tie you up and.
Wait, before you go, could you tell me again what the, the, the ordinance that Walker wrote?
I'm not sure. Go back to two thousand nineteen.
Yeah.
Megan's got it.
Megan's got it.
Can you email it to me, Megan?
Yeah. My one last question, and I don't want an answer tonight, but I'd, I'd really like to know. I mean, based on our ordinance, we have a business that's on Route seven that was proudly created within the past two years. Um, I'm not sure. They went through the laws of everything of how to build it. And then all of a sudden we have fifty to sixty, you know, the whole property is just filled with cars. All right? Um, it's somewhere down near the Stewart's property, um, um, somewhere maybe across the street. But I'm not sure. Do our laws create how many cars you can have on the piece of property? I know in other towns, they say, you know, we have to have beautification out in front and you have to have certain, um, facade on the building and you have to have certain greenery in the front to make it look presentable. Well, I mean, our Route seven has now moved from up near Dollar General, which I, I'd like to really ask the Board of Health if that there is within health conditions or if it should be condemned because of the amount of garbage that's right around that whole place. I don't want an answer on now. I mean, I don't want to hear what that answer is, but I'm really concerned about that issue. Um, so I spoke in my piece. It's time things happen and not just talk.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for watching.
Um, okay. That's it, Megan? Okay. Uh, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion. Move it.
And, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
All right. Everybody have a good night.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Bye, you guys.